All right. Thank you so much Sharon for joining us.
It's my pleasure. Thanks for inviting me.
Before I jump into questions, I just wanted to give you a chance to introduce yourself to our audience. If someone hasn't come across your work or your podcast, it'd be great if you could tell folks who you are. And because our episode is about school boards, it would be great if you could touch on your background and education as well.
Well, I'm Sharon McMahon. You may know me from my profile on Instagram, Sharon Says So. And I'm a longtime government teacher. I've been taught in public schools for many years. Now I mostly teach adults on Instagram who get to be there voluntarily. And there is no graduation requirement, which is, which is a different thing altogether. But one of the things I really focus on is nonpartisan fact-based information. I'm not interested in telling you who to vote for. I'm interested in helping you think about how to choose who to vote for, what things are important. And some of the things that are very important to me are upholding the principles of democracy. And in order to be able to choose candidates that do that, we have to know what those things are. So you may have seen me on social media, but you also may have followed my podcast, which is called Here's Where It Gets Interesting. And I chat with noteworthy people, but we also dive into history via limited documentary series that we regularly produce.
Awesome. And in your prior work as a teacher, what were some of the interactions that you had with school boards? How did your local school board impact your work as a teacher?
You know, I've taught in several states. And I will say that the environment, the local school board environment was very different in each one. And so it just goes to show how much school boards actually matter when teachers and students in these different states, both coasts and the Midwest, have such different educational experiences based on the tone and tenor and how the makeup of the school board. So, you know, when I was teaching in the DC suburbs, which are absolutely rabid about public education, you know, like they want, they want their public schools to be the best in the country. And in large part, they are. The conversations had at the school board level look wildly different than they do in a small town in the Midwest. These huge public school systems that have, that produce some of the best educated students are having big conversations about how can we ensure that all of our students have equal and equitable access to the best education we can provide? How can we mitigate against some of the broader societal issues that impact students who are coming to our schools every day? And of course, no school board can completely mitigate poverty. No school board can mitigate against the, pardon me, the low prior educational attainment of parents. No school board can completely mitigate against a student who did not grow up speaking English and the fact that they may have more needs, more support being needed in a school. But the conversations are about how do we address those issues? Right? My experience in places like, you know, rural, the rural Midwest is far more centered about how we can get students to believe what we want them to believe. How can we get students to adopt the same viewpoints and philosophies that we have? And I think you are seeing this argument continue and spread throughout school boards around the country, where small groups of people want to control what students are learning, what students are consuming, what students have access to. And they want to make that decision, not just for their own student, but for your student as well.
Absolutely. I'm so glad that you touched on some of the battles we're seeing across the country around curriculum and access to a fully accurate education. And I think curriculum is a great example of one of the kind of roles and responsibilities that school boards oversee. And I think generally, a lot of people don't have clarity over the scope of a school board's power, or really what they do at all. So can you talk through other examples? You mentioned curriculum. What are some of the other things that school boards make decisions about?
Well, one of the things that makes the United States unique in the world is that our educational system is heavily fragmented, heavily fragmented. It's not controlled by the federal government by and large. Of course, the federal government administers some programs, but the vast majority of the schools are controlled by state and local governments. So the amount of control that a school board has is dictated by their state government. Some have a tremendous amount of power to just make almost all decisions that they want to make. Others are given a much more narrow scope. You can decide, for example, who you want to hire for this open PE position at the elementary school. You can decide, you know, who to hire to work in your cafeteria. But other states allow school boards to have complete control over the curriculum that is being taught in that individual school district. Other states, that is much more state centralized. So in some states, what that means is you may have a small group of people who are very qualified, very engaged, care a lot about public schools, really have, you know, have spent their careers working in them, know what has worked for them in their classrooms and what hasn't. And you may also have the opposite experience. You may have a small number of people exerting a tremendous amount of control over things like which books students are allowed to see in media centers. They may exert a lot of control over which textbooks students use. And you are seeing lots of battles about things of that nature in certain states about textbooks. There was a recent example where a textbook publisher submitted a textbook for upper elementary students, like a history textbook, to a school board for the school board's approval. Textbooks are very expensive, by the way. So schools are investing, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars into this, these textbooks, submitted them for their approval. And the school board did not like what the textbook had to say about Rosa Parks. And so they went back and they revised. And by the way, what they had to say about Rosa Parks was extremely factual. Like, there was nothing, and there was nothing in it that where you were like, that's not true. No, it mentioned that she was a civil rights activist before she got on the bus, and that this was part of a plan to challenge systemic segregation in the city where she lived. Well, they came back with another revision that removed a lot of the remarks about her being an activist. And it also removed a reference to the color of the people who wanted her to move to the back of the bus. It removed the reference to white people. That still was unacceptable. And then it came, they came back for a third revision that had approximately two to four sentences about Rosa Parks, period. It had removed an already too small sidebar, and cut it down to something that was like, that is not at all the scope of her impact. That was not at all what her intention was. But because those statements were so quote unquote controversial, students are then not able to learn the full and honest accounting of what is happening and what has happened in America. So when we're talking about school boards, it's not, it goes far beyond who works in the lunchroom. And it goes into what are your children allowed to know? And that is a very, very powerful question.
Thank you. That's such a visceral and tangible example of some of the decisions that are being made and the impacts that they can have on students. I also want to talk through thinking about who's running for school boards and diversity and representation that we may or may not see in school boards. Why is diversity and representation on school boards important? And what are potential implications for educational equity?
It's incredibly important to have diversity of all types on a school board. Racial diversity, socioeconomic diversity, educational diversity, diversity of opinion. When we start seeing school boards being taken over, ruled by a certain group of people, that's when we start seeing, that's when we start running into these problems of this small group that has sort of taken over, wanting to control what kind of information your children can know. When we have a broad cross section of diversity on a school board, it becomes nearly ideologically impossible for one group to entirely control the educational experiences and outcomes of students. So it's important for students to be governed by a cross section of people that represent the communities that make up that local school district. So that's one thing. It's also really important for the teachers and the school staff that work there. It's, you know, when we're talking about schools, we have multiple communities, right? We have children, of course, and the children are very important. They're obviously the reason the schools exist. But nothing actually works if there's no adults to work in that building, right? Like, if there's nobody to teach the children, then the schools don't work. So we also must, can, and must consider the teachers that work in those schools and the experiences those teachers have in those schools. School safety is a very hot topic right now. What are we supposed to do about school safety? This is a very complicated issue. There is not one thing that you can put your finger on and be like, if we do X, that'll fix it. This is a, this is asking an individual building of people to address a very broad societal problem, which they have very limited capacity to do. And sometimes people's knee jerk reaction is to just lock down the school, right? It's to maximum security prison, the school building, bulletproof everything, lock everything, everyone is armed, the teachers are armed, the guards are armed, there are metal detectors. And I, I am for school safety, right? I don't want my children being shot at school. I don't want to be shot at school. But nevertheless, some of the places with the highest levels of security are prisons. And they have a lot of issues with violence. Making a school into a prison does not mean that violence cannot occur. It doesn't mean that children won't get into the building with, with weapons. And we do know that the vast majority of mass shooters have a strong connection to the place that they shoot up. It's a workplace or a school that they attended or still attend. So again, school safety is another big issue that you are seeing school boards need to address. Their hands in many ways are limited. They can't address some of the broader issues related to access to guns and that sort of thing. But it's nevertheless an important issue that affects the entire community.
Absolutely. And I know that so much of your work is about combating misconceptions and misinformation surrounding elections. And I know that school board elections are kind of notorious as elections that get very low turnout and that not a lot of people are super engaged to participate in, or even know how to actively participate in. So to start, can you talk through any misconceptions or misinformation around school board elections that would be helpful to clarify?
Well, I think one of the things that I, I would love, a myth that I would love to dispel is that you're not qualified to run for school board, that you can't make a difference on a school board, that school boards are only for people who already work in the school district, or people who have 18 children attending those schools. Schools affect the entire community, right? The, the schools belong to the community. And the purpose of the schools is to educate that community's children so that that community can have low crime, that community can have a well-educated workforce, that community can reap the benefits of a well-educated society. So I want to dispel the myth that if you don't have a PhD in education, you can't run for school board. That is simply false. The vast majority of the time, there's no educational requirement to run for school board. There is, you know, there's an electability issue, right? Like, you need to be able to try to get elected. But if it is something that's on your mind, or on your heart, running for school board is a way that you can directly impact, not just the children that attend that school, or the schools in your community, but the community at large, the community as a whole, would be impacted by your service on that school board. School boards meet part-time. This is generally not a full-time job. It doesn't require you to quit your full-time job. You, they most often meet in the evenings, one to four times a month. It is something that most people who are on school boards, they're working professionals that, that sit on school boards. So I would also love to dispel the myth that you would have to quit your job to be able to serve on a school board. I think the reason people don't show up to school board elections is often they're scheduled during times that are not part of the general election. And that sometimes is done on purpose. It's done on purpose to decrease voter turnout. It's done on purpose to decrease voter turnout among communities who maybe are not as civically engaged and may have a more difficult time learning about the upcoming election. You know, most of us hear about a presidential election, or an election for governor, but within our own communities, it can be more difficult to realize, like, there's an election tomorrow? You know what I mean? Like, that, I can imagine a lot of people listening to this that has had that experience, like, city council? I don't know if I need to go to that. My life is busy. And it's an understandable thing. We do have busy lives. And, you know, there are sometimes efforts to try to keep certain people away from the polls. But the, that fact right there is all the more reason why you need to show up. Is all the more reason why you need to make it a priority. It's all the more reason you need to say to your boss, might be five minutes late coming back from lunch, I'm gonna go vote at lunchtime. Or, you know, set a reminder on your phone, or whatever it is that you need to do to get there. There are so many local elections that are won by the merest of margins. The person who represents my district in my state, not my school board, but my actual state legislature, won by 32 votes. Like, that happened in November. She won by 32 votes. That is, I mean, that is not unusual in local elections. That is not some freak incident. So I know that it seems trite. I know it seems like, oh, every vote matters? Oh, I've never heard that before. You know what I mean? Like, people get tired of hearing that same thing again. But it's just one example of showing up can mean all of the difference for your school communities.
Yeah, it's such helpful framing, because I think that the point you raised about how some of these local elections, like school board elections, are often decoupled from the main election season, can, like, I could look at that and think, like, oh, this is too big a hurdle. Like, this is, even though it's an intentional attack, like, I'm not gonna get my life together to go to both election days. And I think it's such an important reminder of, like, there's a reason why they're decoupled. They don't want us to show up, and that's why we need to show up.
Because it's actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's actually not easier to run two separate elections. That is actually not easier to do that. It costs way more money to run two separate elections. You have to pay, pay the election workers twice. You have to print another set of ballots. You have to, you know, all, to pay for all the locations. It's actually not cheaper, nor is it more convenient to decouple them. It's easier to do it all at one time. So that is something that I always, when I hear that those things happen. And I recently saw a bill introduced at a state level that was going to purposely move the elections up for local, move local elections from even years to odd years, when we're all very conditioned in the United States to vote in, in even years. So they were making an effort to move it to odd years. And it really does beg the question, why? What is the purpose of that? It's not because it's easier or cheaper for the taxpayers?
Yeah, absolutely. There's no logical reason. And I live in New York City where our mayoral elections are on odd years, and the turnout is dismal. Yeah, it's very, very frustrating and really begs the question of who it's benefiting. And so let's say someone does get over that hurdles, they know when their school board election is, they're gonna show up, but they don't really know what to look for, or how to do research on potential candidates. What are some of the things people should be researching to be an informed voter in a school board election?
It's always important to know who the candidates are. Too often, and, and this is no judgment, no shade, but, because I know this is a very common thing, we're not, we don't know for sure who's gonna be on the ballot, and we kind of show up, and we just hope to recognize some names. Like, we hope that, like, is Cindy on there? Okay, I'm gonna pick Cindy. You know what I mean? That's very, very common. So, no judgment if that has happened to you. But if you want to be an informed voter, knowing who is actually on your ballot is, is important place to start. You can go to websites like ballotpedia.com, which have actual pictures of the upcoming, the ballot, and the questions that are gonna be asked on the ballot. So, and there, there are more websites available as well, but that's one just off the top of my head, that helps you prepare in advance for what exactly is going to be on your ballot. So you can be like, okay, I've never heard of that person. Who are they? I also think it's important, if we're going back to the diversity issue, I want to know, what kind of life experience does this person have? I want to know where you came from. I want to know, what do you do for work? I want to know where, you know, like, I want to know a little bit about your background, so that I can help assess who is gonna be the best group of people to represent the schools. I also think it's important to, if possible, read the, your local news coverage about that candidate. This happened to somebody that I know recently. It's actually happened near me. There was a person, two, two people running against each other. They were both women. They had very similar ideas. It was almost like, I don't know, pick a coin toss. Doesn't matter. They're saying the same things. But when you actually Googled one of their names, you found a long, a laundry list of crime accusations for one of them. You know what I mean? She didn't mention that on her website. She didn't put that part on there. So Googling that person's name, like, are they wanted for check fraud? I don't know. I would like to know that. Do you actually live here? We have seen people get elected to Congress who are just complete and total frauds. Like, none of the things they say are real. And that's not just one person either. So like, a quick Google would be useful. But when I say local media coverage, a lot of times, your local newspaper, or your local TV station, will do candidate interviews. They will do candidate, you know, even, sometimes even debates, but they will ask, send a list of questions to a candidate. What would you like to do to improve schools? What would you like to do to X, Y, and Z? If you can find that kind of coverage, I always find that very, more interesting than just what they say on their website. Anyone can look good on a website if you pay someone to make you look good on your website. It's not hard. You get a picture of you with your kids and your dog, standing in some fall leaves, wearing a sweater. And that is, that, you, anyone, person who is convicted of check fraud can look good on their own website. So I, I always find it more revealing to read things where they have to answer things in real time, right? Where they, where they actually have to answer a substantive question. But I'm not gonna tell people what is needed in their own community. You know what your school's issues are. You know if your schools are overcrowded. You know if your schools don't have books. I have taught in a school that didn't have books, because the books were, were destroyed in a water main break, and the school board had not allocated any funds to replace them. You, you probably know what the issues are in your schools. And I want to see candidates who are willing to tackle those issues head-on, and not candidates whose entire platform is about attacking another group. Attacking another group doesn't benefit my child. How are you gonna fix the issues? How are you gonna make sure there are not 47 kids in my child's biology class? That's what I want to know.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's incredibly, both relatable and very actionable advice of how to do this.
Google it!
And you've touched on this a bit already, but I want to ask for someone, maybe who doesn't see why engaging with a school board election is important. Maybe they don't have kids in the district. Why is it important for everyone in a community to care about their local school board election?
That's a great, it is a great question. And it's a, it's a question many people have. My kids are grown. I don't, I don't have to care about these schools anymore. I'm childless by choice. This doesn't affect me. So it's a legitimate question that people ask themselves. And the, one of the answers I would give is, you probably do care about how much money is being taken out of your paycheck, right? You do care about the bill that the county is gonna send you, telling you how much is paying property taxes. You probably do care about the bottom line. And so you want to make sure that the people who you are electing spend the money, your hard-earned money, in ways that make sense. If you don't care about kids, kids are the worst, you should, you probably care about your money, right? So you should care about govern, elected officials, government officials, not spending your money wastefully and fraudulently. You should know what your money is going to. And that is one reason. Another reason is, schools truly are the foundations of safe and prosperous communities. Safe and prosperous communities, which we all want, by the way. Doesn't matter who you voted for. It doesn't matter if you voted for this blind spaghetti monster. We all want safe and prosperous communities. And the bedrock of a safe and prosperous community are quality schools. Quality schools. If you want economic investment, if you want people from a variety of backgrounds to move to your area, if you want, you want to attract really great physicians, you want to attract great businesses, you want people to grow up and be productive members of society, you have to have quality schools for them to attend. So if you care about your community's safety, and your community's economic and otherwise, you care about your community thriving economically and in other ways, it starts very small, with the youngest of children. It starts with our schools.
Thank you. Yes, I completely agree. And I think it's such a helpful way to put it of, like, why, what's going on in our schools really impacts all of us and the future of our community. And because we know that school board elections aren't happening every day, what can folks do to get engaged with their local school board throughout the year, or to, like, engage with their school board members, hold their school board members accountable, to, you know, addressing the key issues in their schools?
You would be shocked at how few people actually attend school board meetings. And you would also be shocked at how much influence you, as a community member, can actually have on a school board. We think of all government as being like your senator. That's how we tend to view all government. Like, dear Senator Bob, I would like you to please make sure there are more napkins in the lunchroom. Are we ever gonna get, like, a reply? Like, do we really expect to get a reply? You know what I mean? No. But guess what? The chances of you actually getting a reply and being able to engage with a real elected official when you contact a member of your school board are extraordinarily high. I can almost promise you that if you email a representative of, on your school board, they are going to reply to you. And of course, the larger your school board, the more challenging that becomes. But they, then they just get more assistance. They have, they have staff that helps them with things. Your ability to impact your school board is far, far greater than you think. If you attend a meeting, and you show up, and you give testimony on an issue, you talk about something that's a challenge your school is facing, or you're advocating for a specific policy, they will sit there. They will literally sit there quietly and listen to you talk. And we, again, we don't think that we can do that with places like Congress. You can't just show up and make Congress listen to you. That is not true in, at the school board level. They will literally sit quietly and listen to you speak. So if you are somebody So if you are somebody who doesn't want to show up, you're, you're shy, or you work overnights, or you know, whatever it is, you would be surprised at how far polite but firm emails go. If you start crossing the line into like, you're a horrible person, I hope your mom dies, you know, like they're, they're gonna pay no attention to you at all. Don't, so don't do that because they will dismiss you as a wacko. But if you're very polite, uh, and professional but firm, it is the squeaky wheel who gets the grease. It actually just is. It's the people making the most noise that make the most change. And we, I think especially as, you know, if you're a woman listening to this, we are conditioned to be polite. That there is a polite way to do things. And I'm not advocating for being discourteous. I'm not advocating for being rude and name-calling and all those things. But we have to get over this idea that we should just say it one time quietly and cross our fingers. Saying it one time quietly and crossing our fingers is actually not how anything meaningful has ever gotten done. Saying it one time quietly and crossing your fingers is not an effective change tool. So saying it repeatedly and getting your friends to say it too, and saying it over and then getting your friends to say it over and getting some media attention to get them to amplify your message and joining forces with another group who wants the same thing. That is how we are able to impact change at, at every level of government, but most especially at local government. And it actually requires far less effort than you even realize.
Thank you. That's so true. The point you made about viewing all government as your senator, that was like an aha moment for me. I definitely do that. Like I think of all government officials or elected officials as like, oh, it's all the same bureaucracy. I'll never get through to them. And I think, yeah, it's such a great point that local government is very different and um, they are more responsive to people's needs.
They have to be, because they're gonna see you at the grocery store. You know what I mean? Like they, they, they don't have a bulletproof car and chauffeur that drives them to a private plane. They're literally gonna see you at the grocery store. So, uh, and, and also they're serving far fewer constituents than a senator is. They, they, I'm not saying they're all gonna be good. And I'm not saying that you're gonna like all of them. I'm just saying, they probably will respond to you.
Yeah, it's so true. They're our neighbors. Awesome. Thank you so much. This was such a fun and like enlightening conversation for me. I feel very energized and amped to get more involved in my local school board. Um, I also want to give you an opportunity, if there's anything I didn't touch on or cover that you wanted to include, feel free to do that.
I think it's just, the only other thing I would like to add is that now more than ever, I won't say now more than ever, because it has been worse than it is today. But I will say, this is a unique moment in US history. This is a unique moment in which America and our communities must decide which direction will we turn? Many of our communities stand at a crossroads. Uh, will we turn towards um, democracy and freedom? Or will we turn in a direction that moves us rapidly away from that? And those types of questions don't just exist in the halls of Congress. Those types of questions are being answered on your behalf every day in schools. They're being answered on your behalf every day at school boards, in state legislatures, on appointed election boards, on levels of government, you are like, I didn't even know that was a level of government. Those questions are being answered on your behalf. And if you care about the answer to that question, we have to pay attention and we have to act and vote accordingly.
Thank you so much, Sharon, for joining us.